This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting for Tuesday, December 13th. This meeting is called to order. To begin with, and I'm sorry, welcome to the Brighton High School Auditorium. We are in a fantastic looking auditorium. We're going to learn a little bit more about it when Lou does his presentation, but we'll start this meeting with a bunch of Brighton Believe Awards, which is awesome. So Dr. McGowan.
That was a smooth entrance right there. Harvey, where's Harvey? Harvey, come on up. Why don't you stand right here? That way we can get the whole camera on you. Dr. Hall got his BHS Social Studies Department outfit on. He's ready to go. Right? Fleece vest. Is that not a BHS Social Studies teacher if I've ever seen one? Looks like it for sure. Yeah, right? Am I right? Every single one of them. That's what the boy said to me. They wore a fleece vest. I'm like, I'm a high school social studies teacher. I thought it was perfect. That's no offense. It's a good looking vest. So Harvey, we're not here just for the humor and the stand-up comedy. We're here to recognize Harvey Westbrooks. A Brighton High School security guard nominated by Principal Dr. Tom Hall, who wrote, "Harvey has been a security guard at BHS for over five years. Harvey is extremely hardworking, compassionate, kind, respectful, and a role model for our BHS students and staff. BHS students absolutely adore Harvey, as demonstrated by their praise of how he treats them and the mutual respect they give him due to his professionalism and kind approach. Harvey works to make our BHS mission a reality, creating a school environment that is safe, welcoming, caring, professional, and free from harassment. Harvey is committed to knowing all of our high school students by name and has just about all 1,250 kids in his memory. I cannot recommend Harvey enough for this recognition. He's an amazing professional colleague and friend. I will tell you from my own personal experience, I just want to share, I could not agree more with everything Tom wrote and then some. Harvey is a wonderful human being who's impacted my own children and countless children in this building, who takes his approach to keeping every child safe so seriously, but does it with heart, does it with kindness, does it with just this incredible brotherly, fatherly mentorship type of perspective that makes a difference for our kids each day. Harvey, thanks for all you do and congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent. Janet Fitzpatrick. Janet, come on up. Andrea Kent, come on up too, please. Andrea was a nominator for Janet, BHS nurse also. Yep, come on up. Yep. Janet Fitzpatrick, a BHS nurse last year and current Council Rock nurse, was nominated by fellow nurse Andrea Kent. Janet treats each student, teacher, and faculty member with a smile and her full attention. She worked on a commonality the health offices are encountering, where students wish to have a change made to their current enrollment information. This program lists the student's name and sex, and thanks to Janet and other BCSD staff, students can now specify their pronouns as well. Student health is the main priority of the health office, and Janet has helped navigate barriers that gender identity and sexual identity changes can bring when providing medical care to our students. Creating an inclusive and safe space for our students permits the most effective and supportive nursing care that our student population and our district deserve. Janet creates relationships and takes pride in watching her students get through their high school years and offering tough love and emotional support when it's needed. She has created rapport with students and staff and smoothly collaborates with any party needed to provide the best student outcomes. Janet, thank you very much for your service. Jenny Lynn Pickering, please come on up. Is Maya here as well? Okay, great. I mean, not great that she couldn't make it, but great that we're all set. Jenny Lynn Pickering, a BHS art teacher and yearbook advisor, was nominated by student Maya Hinsley. Maya wrote, "Yearbook would not have been such a welcoming and friendly environment without its advisor, Mrs. Pickering. She makes her classroom such a wonderful space to be in by extending a kind word to each and every student. I know that I am not the only one who has felt included and welcomed by her outreach with her kids. As a yearbook editor, I've been with her under pressure, like an impending yearbook deadline, as she keeps her cool and continues to offer her support to other students and our staff whenever needed. I've experienced her kindness as we celebrated a staff member's birthday with bagels and coffee she brought to homeroom. I've experienced her integrity and devotion to honesty and rightful action in our classroom through challenges with students, obstacles in the yearbook's completion, or arguments between staff. Moreover, Mrs. Pickering has also been a friend to me. I could show up at her classroom after a bad day, and she would drop everything and talk with me if the situation called for it. She has never hesitated to offer a warm hug." Jenny Lynn, thank you so much for your service and congratulations. Katie Mally. And is Ava Voss here? Is Ava here by any chance? Okay. Katie Mally, a BHS art teacher, was nominated by 2022 graduate Ava Voss. Ava wrote, "Mrs. Mally is a dedicated and passionate teacher for everyone and everything. From giving up her lunchtime to help students with their portfolios, to staying late to help a student perfect their piece, Mrs. Mally puts her students first and herself second. Throughout my high school career, I have never felt so passionate and excited about a class. While it may seem insignificant, knowing that I will be greeted with a warm smile and openness, no matter the circumstances, creates a positive shift in attitudes. Students are eager for the class. The little things make a big difference. It seems self-explanatory, but as I reflect on my entire high school career, I am unable to define a teacher so kind and dependable towards their students as Mrs. Mally. She deserves to be recognized because she is always there for her students, not because she has to, but because she wants to. I hope that she knows the priceless impact she has made on so many students and artists' lives." Katie, thanks so much for demonstrating the Brighton Believes. Casey Pruitt. Casey Pruitt, a special education teacher at Brighton High School, is nominated by Colleen Hall, who co-teaches in the ICT 10th grade English class with Casey. Colleen wrote, "Responsibility. Casey's ability to design and execute interesting and engaging lessons is a powerful thing to be privy to as her co-teacher. She is often excited by a new idea or a concept she's discovered in her research, and her generosity in sharing her ideas strengthens our work together. Respect. Casey designs lessons with students' lives in mind, leveraging their athletic or artistic passions. I can confidently say that I've become a stronger teacher because of our work together. Integrity. Casey is the kind of teacher we all hope to be when we choose this profession. She is compassionate, kind-spirited, and clear of purpose. Kindness. I have seen Casey organize funding and then shopping and delivery of groceries to the homes of families and colleagues whose circumstances leave little time or energy for even such necessities. In short, she reminds us of our humanity. I truly cannot think of a more worthy recipient who embodies what Brighton believes." Casey, thanks so much for demonstrating the Brighton Beliefs. Would like to thank again everybody who could come tonight and be a part of it, to your families too, who are here to support you. We are so grateful for the service that your loved ones give to the district and our kids, and thank you for what you sacrifice in that effort as well. The Brighton Beliefs Awards, again, the nominations are online. It's such a great way for us to recognize the ways that our staff, our students, our community members are demonstrating those Brighton beliefs in their work, and what a great way to start a meeting. Think about these wonderful community members. Can you give them one more round of applause, please?
As Dr. McGowan is making his way back to the table here, I will, before I call for public participation, oftentimes people like to stay for the rest of the meeting and get budget updates and facilities updates and things like that. Other times, people have other things to do back at their homes, like housework and taking care of kids and things like that. So if you are so inclined and need to leave now, you are absolutely welcome to do so. You are also very much welcome to stay. Thanks. As is our normal course of practice for every meeting, we allow for public participation. I'll ask that if you would like to make comments, that you come to the podium and say your name and the town you live in. We allow three minutes for public participation. Seeing no one, we'll move on with the agenda by approving the agenda. We've all received tonight's agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Karen? Seconded by Eleanor? It's like way down there. All those in favor? Aye. Agenda is approved. We've also received previously the minutes from November 29th Education Meeting. Any questions, edits in regards to those minutes? Motion to approve the November 29th Education Meeting minutes. Moved by Susan? Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Next up, we're going to get a Student Support Services Program update from Deanna Exbagnola. I do want to quickly say, Deanna, as you're getting set up, a thanks to Bill and Jack and Evan, who are our tech people, who got everything set up for us tonight at the high school. I'm pointing at somebody else. Did I miss somebody? Charlotte as well. I apologize. Charlotte as well. I missed. Thank you very much. I can't see as well from back here as you guys think I can, so I just apologize. Thanks to everyone who gets these set up. This is the third of our meetings where we go to see the schools, and they're very important, but I know it's extra work for our tech team, and so my appreciation on behalf of the entire board for everything getting set up tonight. Deanna?
Thank you. It's great to be here tonight to see everyone. Thanks for having me. So Student Services Update. Since we last met, actually, I like to take the opportunity to talk about the different areas that Student Services encompasses. I was at a dinner gathering and someone was asking about my job, and oh, how wonderful, how great, and what's your title? Director of Student Services. That's wonderful. What is that? So as you see some of the areas here listed, I'm not going to be highlighting each one of them. We could be here for quite some time. I would love to talk about all of them, but I'm just going to highlight some of the key points in the areas here. I think what's critical, as you look at those areas listed above, is that the Office of Student Services provides support and resources needed for students to access the curriculum, instruction, and to be in an inclusive social community as to the greatest extent possible. That's our job. That's what we do in the Office of Student Services. And as you see, nursing there, and it's so exciting to be here tonight, and we have one of our own nurses honored for Brighton Beliefs, and those statements couldn't have been more true than Andrea wrote about Janet. So congratulations again to Janet. We have some new members to our team. I'm going to highlight some of their things that they, as we go through some of the areas, and wanted to highlight some of those names and faces up there and put names to faces. In particular, I would like to highlight and introduce Kathy Degui, who is our new TIES coordinator. TIES standing for Together Including Every Student. That's the support that's in place for our students in extracurricular, community-based activities, but I also want to take this opportunity to recognize and thank Karen McGraw for her seven years of service as our TIES coordinator. Kathy has hit the ground running thanks to Karen's transition and support, and we're ready to already. So Danielle in town, be ready. We're going to start recruiting new TIES volunteers to get them up and running as soon as possible. So when we look at mental health and wellness, and you saw on the screen there, Caitlin O'Neil is our new Assistant Director for Student Services. Her oversight of the mental health department is critical as we look at how we support the blueprint area, in particular, mental health and wellness is described there, as we look at our whole child and the success of a student beyond academics, but also, in fact, Dr. McGowan, we're interviewing someone today, and they described that it's not only supporting a student academically, but supporting them to be good people. And I think that this description of our blueprint encapsulates that as well. So thank you to Caitlin O'Neil for her efforts. Since I was here when we did blueprints a couple months ago, our blueprint update, excuse me, I want to highlight some areas and some pieces, in particular, our strategies to accomplish our blueprint objectives. And I'm going to highlight for us tonight the Galisano, our partnership with Galisano. When I last provided an update, we were a conditional approval by the Office of Mental Health, and I'm happy to announce that we have been fully approved by the Office of Mental Health. And beginning on December 6th, we started beginning to support and service students right located at an office space at the high school. And we have had representation from Galisano come and work with our Department of our Mental Health Team, both 612 and K5, to talk about referral process, to overview this pyramid that you see here, that you've seen before resembling our RTI pyramids, is how we can support our students through tiered approaches, how we can look at building a school capacity to support the emerging needs of our students' mental health needs, and those complex social-emotional needs as described in the slide here. Not moving. There we go. Katie Lembo is the practitioner who's working here on Tuesdays, and I'm pleased to announce that we not only have she had a full schedule each Tuesday that she's been here, we actually also now have a waitlist. We have a healthy waitlist, and we have students in the referral process, which is great to know that we are supporting needs and getting right to things for our students, for our families. Those are short-term basis connections for families. Either they are connected in the community or unable to get to counseling support in the community, very, very individualized on a short-term triage basis. I don't want to steal the thunder of Galisano, who's actually going to be our featured guest for our February District PTA meeting, and they're going to go through a lot of their highlights in the work that they do at that time, which will be really, really exciting. So as we look to support and build capacity within, it is not just about sending our students to someone else, it's not sending someone to another place in the community, but how can we build our own capacity? And these are some examples of ways that other districts have accessed this resource to build capacity, but in particular, I'm really excited to share that we're already focusing in on school avoidance, and that they will be coming, team members from Galisano will be joining our K through 12 Mental Health Department meeting in January. Thanks again to Caitlin O'Neil for organizing that, so that we can look at different strategies for school refusal, school avoidance, and how we can partner with community members, community agencies, families, and students to help get them to school. So more to come on that, including apparent information night, which will be really exciting as well to provide some more support to families, more information as well. I'm pleased to share, oh, I already did share about our numbers. We have 15 students in active care, as I said, six referrals, and some students on the waitlist, which is really exciting to see. Some highlights, and I am stealing this from previous presentations, stealing it right from Dr. McGowan himself. I'm going to ask you to draw your attention to that navy blue line that you see. It's the bottom line as you look at that data chart. It is the second-to-last row on the grid, the table there. I'm pleased to see the progress of our graduation rates of our students with disabilities. That is exceptionally exciting, and we're very, very proud of that, the work that's gone into this, and we are looking very forward to being able to continue this momentum moving forward for our students with disabilities. That rests on our very strong continuum of services, and you see an example of our current continuum of services right now, ranging from supporting students in the area of related services only, to self-contained, to supporting students socially and emotionally in a path, in our path program, both at French Road and in middle school. I'm just highlighting and drawing out some of those pieces. We're always looking and examining our level of need, where we have students exiting our programs, where we have our anticipating increases of needs of students coming in, and how we can look to support in students on an individual basis. In particular, I want to highlight some numbers for you in terms of the preschool area, because that's another place where we're looking, because those are future incoming kindergarteners. We went back and looked at data from five years ago. Our numbers for students in from 2017, 18 school year was 30, and at this point in time, we're up to 58, and that has been the consistent doubling data that we saw last year, and we're seeing to be marking that same increase moving forward. Terry Lawson, who you saw on the first slide, is our CPSC Chairperson and district psychologist working in those areas. Caitlin and Terry work together to support our students that are parentally placed in our private parochial schools in the community, as we are a district location who supports those plans of those students in that area. Here's another place where we are looking to, how do we support our students in the variety of schools that you see listed there? And there's some numbers there as well to show that we've also had some increase of students with special needs over the last few years, and we continue to stay the course. So we have a number there. We're currently at 176, and that's December, students with plans, and the other data numbers that you see there were from June. So we continue to, and there's lots of reasons to think about students who increased, those schools may have increased population during COVID, and students and families remain to stay in there, but we're also identifying students in there in different ways, and families are reaching out to us, and families are also coming to our community, not only for these schools, but because of the services that we can provide for them. Success does look different for every student, and because of that, the least restrictive environment for some students may be out of our district beyond our own continuum, and that includes some of the area, the agencies that are listed there. We're constantly looking at those numbers. We're looking at how not only do we support our students as they may go to those settings, but also to look to see how we can bring those students back. In particular, as you've heard me mention, we're looking at how we are always constantly supporting the emerging mental health needs, the social-emotional needs, and sometimes some students, like I said in the beginning, those least restrictive environments are these settings here. I'm very proud of the partnership that we have with transportation and registration as we look to switch and keep students engaged in school and have no interruption of service, whether that's here in our walls, or if we're sending them to a new setting to support those needs. These, we're also partnering and community, excuse me, communicating on a regular basis. These agencies also have waitlists. They have staffing and resource issues, and so while this may be the right place for a student, we may need to look back at our own resources while we are waiting those placements, and how do we continue to support our students as we wait those placements, and look for other variety of different needs in ways that we haven't thought about before. That might include looking at teaching assistance, additional resources, and I also want to say too, we are continuing to hire teaching assistants, subs in the area of special education, teachers of visually impaired, are some key areas where we are looking for candidates. My timer for myself. Some highlights and celebrations last night. I was really excited to partner with members of our school community at the high school. We had Mike Wayne, the teacher of Project Grow, who teaches our program at St. John Fisher University, our 18 to 21-year-old program. He shared about that program with families who actually are either both, we invited the middle school families and high school families to come and hear more about the process and the transition to that program, which was very informative. We had some great questions that we were able to address. It is a part of a new series that we're going to be developing for families in the evening, so that parents can have, ask questions, talk to one another about their experiences, and learn from one another as well. I'm really excited too to recognize Casey Pruitt tonight also, because she's been a part of the work that we're doing in terms of transition and our work as we learn about graduation pathways. She's been integral in helping our staff understand and communicate with our families different ways that we can accomplish that graduation rate that I highlighted before. Just a slide there showcasing some of the features about Project Grow. Again, it was a great turnout last night and a wonderful opportunity for our students as we look at different work-based vocational and career opportunities for these students to develop the most, the greatest amount of independence possible, which is really exciting. Some upcoming dates that I will not read to you. They are there for your reading leisure to refer to. We're really excited that our new family reception is back live and in person on January 12. It will be hosted at Council Rock, so thank you, Mr. Tappin, and we're looking forward from many community agencies to welcome new families, to mix and mingle, get to know one another, and also, as I referenced, our PTA meeting featuring Galisano and looking at school avoidance with our families as well. Any questions? And just some featured, some pictures up there also from Galisano, but also our students from Project Grow. We have one student that's on her way to a full employment after leaving the program in a spice program, a spice factory in Fairport, and one of the previous slides showed a student who graduated and is fully employed, independently employed at St. John Fisher University in the cyber cafe. So some more successes we're really proud of. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Just one, and I'm curious, when we look at all the mental health challenges that you and your team are addressing, it's probably impossible to identify how much COVID and the time away here or two exacerbated that situation for so many people. Do we have a sense, you know, a couple years later, are we thinking about what are lessons learned? And I can't believe I'm saying this, but should we ever have some sort of lockdown again, like that we could be better than we were before? And I think probably, Deanna, that's a three-hour answer based on discussion, but do you have a sense that we're looking at lessons learned, so if we ever got put in that situation again, we can be better, mental health-wise and education-wise?
I think that would be a great, I'd love to take that topic back to our mental health teams and to our school-based teams as well. My first response to you would be, I think it's about connection and different ways of connecting with families. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It is a knock on the door. It is a phone call. It's an email. It's a Zoom. It is just a note in the mailbox. It is just a fun, different, all different ways that work for all different families that may also look beyond the typical school hours as well.
That helps. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much. Lou Limo, the BHS Facilities Plan Update.
Good evening. Thank you again for the opportunity to highlight some of our capital project work. I'm proud to be joined tonight by our OACM team, which is Owner, Architect, Engineer, Construction Manager. So we have Nick Appolito from Campus Construction. We have Aaron McConnell from ME Engineering, who's our HVAC whiz, and we have David Hallmark from SEI Design. So tonight, the format of tonight's presentation is we're going to take you through really the vote in May of 2017 that started this journey of capital improvements over really this next decade. We're going to take you through the work that we accomplished there. I'm going to invite Dr. Hall up to talk about the benefits of what we achieved from that work, and then I'm going to ask Nick Appolito from Campus to talk about what's planning, what's coming up next, and then I want to really talk and highlight to what the building has prioritized for future investment, and our architect will talk about the master planning that's going on right now and what the community should expect to see in these, really these next coming years. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Nick Appolito from Campus Construction first. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. As Lou said, I'm with Campus Construction, and I am the senior project manager working on this project. We just want to take a moment to highlight some of the things that have already occurred here specifically at Brighton High School. So the 2017 vote, we finished that construction the summer of '21. I have to stop and think about it because we have so many projects going on, but so we were voted on in 2017, and the construction went on. we were voted on in 2017 and the construction went on and ended in summer of '21. We would like to highlight a couple of things that did happen here at Brighton High School. Specifically, we were able to replace the turf and the track area out in the stadium. We also provided new tennis courts. We did a full gut and redo of the science classrooms and the science labs. This auditorium right here, hopefully you remember what it looked like, and now you can see what it is now. We'll talk about this space a little bit more. We replaced the fire alarm system throughout the entire building. We updated and renovated multiple bathrooms, both student and staff bathrooms. We did a multitude of locker room renovations specifically to achieve ADA compliance throughout the bathroom areas. We also touched a bunch of classrooms, stairwells, and hallway doors throughout the project. We worked on our ventilation systems by replacing some rooftop units, and we also did some various upgrades throughout, including our nurse's office, the attendance office, and some spots in the main office as well. Sorry, I am technologically challenged. Arrow down, thank you, Lou. So we wanted to take a moment to show you this slide, and then Dr. Hall's going to follow in a moment, but this is a picture of what the high school auditorium, right where we're standing right now, looked like probably about two to three years ago. The initial plan was to come in here, replace the seats, fix the floor, dress up the curtains, change the lights, and we did that, and then some. There's a term that we use in construction, and it's called unforeseen circumstances. And if there is ever a textbook definition of that, this auditorium would be it. While we were doing this project, this space right here turned into the largest abatement project, asbestos abatement project in Rochester, New York. Everything in this space was full of asbestos. We did not know, as we were working on some walls and then looking at the ceiling, and everywhere we turned, everything had a domino effect. We had to build a scaffold just to get up to the ceiling, to redo all the ceiling. We had to tear out every wall in this place. And in hindsight, it came out amazing, but we wanted you to see and understand that even though we had a plan about what was going to happen here, that went out the window pretty quick, and we had to change numerous times. I see Larry shaking his head over there because he was privy to all the conversations that were happening as we had to adjust, but these are the things that happen on a construction project. In addition, our science classrooms, we found a lot of asbestos in those as well. With a building of this vintage, we are now more aware and conscious of the fact that we can and may encounter some of those things going forward. We will continue to test for those things and handle them appropriately as they come up, but we wanted you to just understand that the project changed a little bit as we were going on, but the end result is truly amazing.
Evening, everybody, and I'm very proud to now be the principal of such an incredible building. And if you think back in the history of Brighton High School, the first shovel of dirt was taken out of the ground in December, December 23rd of 1938, and they had to get the paperwork in before it turned 1939. And it's quite amazing to think what's happened since that time. And every time I came into the auditorium to see what we were just seeing, shown, it started to cause all sorts of agitation and anxiety, and I'm sure not just in me, but everybody who's a part of that project, and just seeing once after another, every time we would get updates, what needed to happen. And when you look around in this beautiful place now, the Families for the Arts of Brighton, I remember just meeting with them, and they were looking to do, you know, sales of flowers and candy and all sorts of other things that they would do to raise money to make improvements to the auditorium, and to think about what it actually took, but their, their initial push and emphasis to do something to the space, and it really, thank you to the board and our community, it's become an incredible space for our students, not only our musicians and choral students, but all of our performing arts and our visual arts and all the musical and drama productions that come forth. And now we're opening up the floor to other buildings and families for everybody to come and see and take part in this wonderful space. So thank you again for that. Our large group instruction room, also, if you've been in there prior to the renovation, you know, there are these very skinny desks with very uncomfortable seats with all sorts of screws sitting on top of the desktops, you really couldn't do anything much in there. And thank you again for allowing us to make such a wonderful renovation for a college lecture-type hall. Meetings happen in there, there's charging stations, it's just a state-of-the-art room to offer up a large space for meetings or classes. Our science classrooms, every single space was updated and touched in some way. This particular classroom, 374, is not only a classroom, but also a lab room. And we were talking about a space like this back in the late 90s when we were looking at renovations for the science department. And finally, we have two beautiful rooms, in addition to all the other classrooms that were renovated, but two rooms that are labs and classes, and everything's done in the same room and space. Such a phenomenal achievement, and again, thank you to the board and everybody who participated in making that happen. I know we couldn't have asked for anything more. Our tennis courts, I know our tennis teams along with the community who plays there, and you see people playing tennis all throughout the fall, spring, and summer evenings, and even sometimes during the days, but they're appreciative of the new tennis courts, and also our phys ed classes when they're doing various different events, having, you know, sealed, well, without cracks where they're tripping over it and having something that looks really nice, appreciative of that too. So thank you again. There's so much other, so many other renovations that have gone on, and I can't wait to share with you what we're thinking about to make it an even better space in the future.
One of the things I didn't choose well in my introduction is what Tom has showed, Dr. Hall has showed, is all the program space that's visible. There was so much work in this project that was up above the ceilings and behind the walls. We wanted to invite our engineer to, for the community to appreciate all the work that went into the engineering and all the considerations that are made when we're designing the mechanical and the core systems of the building. So with that, I'd like Aaron to talk of that, talk to those, you know, the considerations in the design, what we were able to achieve, and then making his television debut will be Mr. Rob Luce. And Rob's going to talk about all these things, wonderful things that were engineered, but how are we actually using them? So I'd like him just to take a second to talk about the work of, that he oversees with his team and using these systems to make sure that we're responsible with tax dollars, we're responsibly with energy conservation. So I'll welcome Rob to the podium with a great applause this evening.
Good evening, all. I'm Aaron McConnell within the engineering. First of all, I'm glad I'm not following Rob, I'm before Rob. So when we started this project from the beginning, Lou came to me and said, hey, we need you guys to increase, bring our technology to the latest and greatest, provide air conditioning throughout the building, increase the ventilation and filtration requirements to come up to the Department of Health requirements, increase our heating system efficiencies, and oh, by the way, we don't want to see your stuff. So we welcomed the task, and you know, here we are. So some of the important energy conservation measures that we implemented throughout the project, the first one being the introduction of variable frequency drives on the larger fan systems. In layman's terms, what that means is we're able to adjust the amount of airflow to your building to actually accommodate the building's needs. So instead of your systems running 100% capacity when they may not need to every day, we're able to ramp those speeds up and down, which, you know, relates to a huge energy savings there. One of the more measurable ones and stuff that you can see, and I hope you can appreciate, is the replacement of the lighting systems throughout a lot of the spaces into the newer LED-style lighting. That's an important one because not only do you see an increase in energy savings by a reduction in electrical usage, but more importantly, you see a decrease in maintenance and replacement costs. So picture Rob having to go up to a 70-foot light pole out on the field to replace a light. Doesn't have to do that as much now, and when he does do that, it's a fraction of the cost. So another measure we did was the introduction of what's called a vacancy and occupancy sensor in the rooms. So that one is pretty simple. If nobody's in the room, these sensors allow the lights in the space to go off. So again, reducing energy costs when not needed. Then the next one is a kind of a cool feature, is the automatic daylighting control within the spaces. So what that means is these controllers monitor the outside lighting levels, and if it's a nice bright day, sends a signal to the lights within the rooms and says, hey, let's turn the lights down. Again, energy savings that we never had before at this campus. In addition to the automatic daylighting features, we introduced dimmable features to all the classroom lights. So again, with the teachers, they are able to dim the lights to actual usage, and honestly, if the kids are out of control, they can flash them really quick as well, too. Switching over to my forte is more on the HVAC measures. So a lot of your buildings throughout Brighton have the heat pumps in there. So we were able to replace the heat pump systems throughout the classrooms, and by doing that, we're able to increase the energy efficiencies with the new heat pumps while decreasing the noise. And that's the important part, because at the end of the day, my goal is to improve the learning environment for these kids, as much as it is to decrease the energy usage for these guys and these guys. So that was a huge part of my task in designing this project. In addition to that, all of the new HVAC equipment was implemented into your building control system. So your building control system is a very complex thermostat that you'd see in your house, and that allows you to do programming and night setbacks and all that cool stuff that, I'm sorry, I'm an engineer nerd, so I say that's cool. One of the big things is your old control systems were pneumatic. We kind of got away from the pneumatics and implemented into electronic controls, which gave you a lot tighter and faster responses and controls for that. Probably the biggest thing we see with old pneumatic control systems is they leak, right? It's tube, it's air. And when a system leaks, it's longer compressor runtimes. Again, we're able to eliminate that and cut that back. Scheduling of the HVAC systems, so at night, when the building's not occupied, we don't need to maintain, you know, 70 degrees within the building, we can take that down. And then a couple hours before the building comes into occupancy, we're able to bring that temperature back up. So again, that's a huge energy savings. The other nice thing with that setback in the scheduling is ventilation. One of the largest energy usages in your building is ventilation. However, we have habit, we have to breathe, right? So again, if the building is not occupied through the DDC system, it's able to tell the ventilation systems, hey, your building's not occupied, so we can decrease the amount of fresh air into this building. Again, prior to the students and the faculty arriving, we're able to re-energize and reactivate those ventilation systems and get the building back up to where it should be. Some of the other features that we have on here are, again, similar to the lighting, we did occupancy sensor control of the ventilation. So if nobody's in the space, we're able to decrease the amount of ventilation. So by decreasing the amount of ventilation is increasing the energy savings and more money back to the district in that measure. Some of the newer demand control ventilation is CO2 monitoring for the larger spaces. And that's important because in the old days, with gymnasiums, auditoriums, we always had to ventilate to the maximum occupancy of the space. Well, we all know that us engineers tend to overdo stuff, right? So the occupancy is very rarely to that full extent. So the nice thing with these measures is it's constantly measuring the amount of CO2. CO2 is just us breathing. So the more people in the space, the more we're breathing, the more ventilation it introduces. As that CO2 rate goes down, the ventilation decreases back down to where it used to be, or should be, I'm sorry. So again, that's a huge energy savings there. And one of the, again, ventilation measures that we implemented here is we put energy recovery ventilators on the major systems that require a lot of ventilation. When you go into a school district, there's certain spaces that tend to put off odors, so they require more ventilation. Locker rooms, science rooms are great examples, and in this application, we renovated the science rooms. Science rooms have a lot of odors, so we need a lot of good fresh air and turnover. What the energy recovery systems that we implemented as part of these measures do is it takes the warm, or warm in the heating mode or cool in the cooling mode, energy from the relief air systems, and it preheats or precools the outside air conditions coming back into the units. So again, that decreases the energy used by your building and increases the cost savings to the district. Finally, on the plumbing measure, plumbing-wise, we were able to implement water conservation features on all of the new fixtures, be it with automatic flush valves. I have teenage boys at home, let's admit it, a lot of times they don't wash their hands, they don't flush the toilet. So the automatic flush valves do that for you, and it also monitors the amount of water. So if they do wash their hands, they're teenage boys, they leave the faucet on and they walk away. So with the measures we've implemented for your district, that cuts that off and saves you the water conservation measures. So again, I appreciate everything in allowing me to work on your district, and I'm super excited to keep going and building this infrastructure. So I'm going to turn it over to Rob here, and...
Thanks, Aaron.
Good evening. Just so everybody knows, this is the first time I've spoke in front of a crowd since my senior year of high school. So think how long ago that was. I do have a couple of things with the DDC controls that we also do. We do, after our night setback, we do what they call a staggered start in the mornings before school, and what we do is we take a section of the building, and we do this district-wide, so, but with that DDC system, it will start sections of the building and work its way through the whole building so that we're not at prime rate. So that's a huge savings. If we start them all at the same time, that would be our energy costs for the day. And then Lou wanted me to talk about the rooms and reservations. That's also a huge energy savings for us, too, because not all the rooms are used in the evenings. So we have a standard day set on our DDC system, our rooms and reservations. We have, like, the main office is run a little later than most spaces, the gyms do. But if somebody wanted to use a classroom inside or outside group, when they put it in the facility's use, it will automatically turn on and off all the ventilation in that space for that given period. There's usually a half an hour warm-up time or cooldown time already built in the system for that. Some other small energy-saving things, all of our exterior lights now are LED on this building. We're working on a few at the middle school, too, but this building especially. That gave us the opportunity to be able to have the building lit at night, throughout the night, which is what Brighton Police requested, making it a safer atmosphere here. I really don't have anything else with the DDC system.
Appreciate also the amount of time you've put into the inspecting and pre-work to sort of find some of these things, and then in some cases, Rob, I know that you've had to react with your team to something that we just found, whether it was a busted pipe or something like that, and you and your whole team were able to jump on that. So greatly appreciate all that unplanned work that just pops into your day when we're doing all this stuff. So thank you for that as well. You and your team.
I want to add one thing to Aaron's. He was talking about the maintenance on the turf lighting. They are on, they were on a 10-year rotation with the HID fixtures that were there before. Every 10 years, it was between $75,000 and $100,000 cost because they had to change all the bulbs, they had to bring a big crane out, they had to have five people here. We no longer will do that, and we also have a 25-year warranty on our lighting system through Muskel. So it's a full warranty, I read it five times today to make sure, so...
Rob, I know you only graduated in your senior year in high school, it's just a few years ago, but we waited exactly that many years too long to have you come and speak, so, great job, thank you. Much appreciated.
Well done.
Thank you.
I was surprised that Lou volunteered you to present at every future meeting, like each twice a month, but you did great. So it was fantastic.
And I'm the lucky one who gets to follow Rob loose. So, we just kinda bringing you down the path here. We showed you what we've done. Now what we'd like to do is sort of transition into what is currently happening, and then we'll talk a little bit about what is coming up. So, that was the 2017 Capital Improvement Project that we were just discussing. Now we'd like to shift gears into the 2021 Capital Improvement Project. And the first piece of that, Rob already alluded to, which was the upgrade to the stadium lights. I don't know if anybody's truly had a chance to see them while they're on out there, but those lights are amazing. They are an upgrade, they are an LED system, they are pinpoint accurate, they have, they don't disturb your neighbors anymore. Uh, we also have the show light system, which is the blue lights that you can see on the poles that are going up. It's really a phenomenal system. Uh, Dr. Hall has the ability to play music with it, um, which I know he and Nate Merritt are very excited about. So that is one of the things that we have already accomplished in the current project. The remainder of this project will kick back up in March of twenty-three, and we're going to be doing a bunch of the things that are listed there. I'll highlight those. The locker room renovation is locker room C. That is the wrestling locker room, and that's gonna get an entire tear-down and redo. Showers, lockers, everything. We're also redoing the site work in front of the high school building. This was going to be part of a previous project, but the numbers were astronomical, and we ended up having to say no to that and punted it towards this project now. We've scaled down the project a little bit and redid the design, but we will be redoing the front of the building, and it will look beautiful and really tie into the rest of the motif of the building. We're gonna be focusing the rest of our efforts in the pool area, where we're gonna be redoing the bleachers, we're gonna be upgrading the pool ventilation system, as well as the pool filtration system. Um, and then lastly, we're gonna be making a couple of improvements to the Maker Space that is tied into the library area. So now let's move forward, one more. We have what we call the 2022 Capital Improvement Project, and this is something that we have approved, uh, through referendum last year, and we are now in our final design. Everything has been sent to the State Education Department, and we are simply just awaiting our approval. But the highlights of what is gonna happen here at the high school in that portion of the project focuses in two areas, and it's the high school gym and auditorium, uh, lower roof replacement. So, right above us, the roof area here, and then there's a roof area that goes down the hallway there. The roof's in pretty rough shape, and Rob and his team have nursed it along long enough, but we are now going to address that and get the, the roof taken care of properly in this location. And then the highlight would be the gym. We are going to gut the gym, we're gonna replace the floor, we're gonna replace the bleachers, we're gonna infill the press box, we're gonna change the backboards, we're gonna change the scoreboards, we're gonna paint the whole thing. We may do windows, that's one of our alternates that we need to see how that works out, but that gym is going to turn into that wow showpiece, just like this auditorium did when it's all said and done. So when you do have your athletic events there, parents, visitors, guests, other teams are gonna walk in and go, wow, Brighton did this right. So that's what's coming down the line, and then I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues to talk even more about what else is coming down.
Good evening. My name is David Hallmark. I'm an architect at SCI Design Group. Um, as Dr. Hall said, in the nineties, you guys were thinking about that, uh, science renovation. I won't say what I was doing, but I'm glad you waited till two seventeen, so I could join the project. Um, for the gym, uh, we were excited when we started this. Part of that building, the front entry and the first core portion of the gym, is from your nineteen thirties construction. And then they did an addition in the fifties. In the sixties, there was a renovation, as I was trying to lay out this gym, because they wanna make the gym floor more efficient, and there's a column. And in nineteen sixty-nine, there's a note on the drugs that says, existing column to remain. And so that created a burden for us. But as you can see with our layout, we took the bleachers off of the right side of the gym and shifted the main court over. Your bleacher layout, which is gonna be brand-new, is more of a collegiate style. So it's gonna wrap around three sides, and you're gonna have a more congregated viewing of this. The volleyball court will finally be centered inside of the gym. And we'll be replacing your hard collapsible divider with a vinyl curtain. And your mobile vinyl curtain will get a new vinyl curtain, these drop down. And so they're more efficient and they break up the space easier. We're gonna be doing painting, replacing doors, because the doors right now are not up to code, and provide you safer egress. And also, including some monographics to kinda spice up your gym, and again, make it look nicer when you have teams coming in to visit.
Thank you. So yes, very excited about the gym renovation. Um, and here is, you know, we have several administrators, teachers, people who came together to, and, um, to come up with this next list of future projects that we're pretty excited about. The first is renovation of our entire music suite, um, from the choral room, orchestra, and the band room, uh, from one end to the other. Uh, upgrading the practice rooms, um, and creating more strategic storage, so they can actually have more space to work with kids in the classrooms, and storage, um, to store all the instruments that we have. And right now, we probably have about four different closets, areas that we, we place things in, that they have to manage, that are all over the building, wherever we have space to, to store the instruments, uh, right now. Um, but hopefully, that will be renovated, and again, the practice rooms being a practical part of their everyday activity, and are more strategic in terms of the place, uh, that they take up. They were added, I think, somewhere back in the, the nineties, and, um, were never really, um, quite, uh, installed correctly to make it so that, you know, they're a practical in, would utilize the space that they have. Um, the technology area, so we have a pretty large space from one twelve to one fourteen, one sixteen on the very, on the creek side of the building, and from one end to the other, looking to completely gut that space, and then create a real twenty-first century, um, technology, um, lab classroom. That's versatile and flexible compared to what it is now. Um, we're going to look at updating our library display area, uh, for all the different things that we do throughout the year, art projects, VPA, um, displays, new lighting, new glass, uh, new wall coverings. Uh, one of our larger projects that we'd really like to see, you know, as we've gone through the years, we've done away with certain, um, classroom spaces and office space in order to make classroom space, but now we have, you know, over the last fifteen, twenty years, a lot of that specialized, um, or the, the classrooms have become specialized classroom spaces for various needs that we have. So, get, the classroom space itself gets tighter and tighter, especially in our humanities, and we'd like to create two new classrooms right between the softball field and the, the glass, beautiful glass corridor and the pool hallway, which never gets used, and make that a functional hallway with two classrooms that are attached between the softball field and the school. And that would most likely become humanities rooms. Um, for the front entrance, I know there's been a lot of conversation about putting in, um, some sort of accessibility, uh, accessibility entrance, um, and that's been discussed for many, many years. Well, right now, what we're hoping is taking the, it would be the, what we call the freshman staircase, and the freshman staircase would now be an actual entrance with an elevator. So you immediately walk in the doors and there's an elevator. And we're waiting to see, making sure that we can actually do this. But the elevator would go up to the first floor, or the second floor, um, right in the main entrance, uh, you could get to the office, the nurse, the attendance office, the gym, and then right to the auditorium for any students who are disabled, or students who are coming on crutches and those sort of things, that come right into the front doors. And then the elevator would also then be able to go to the third and possibly to the fourth floor, um, from there. Uh, our entrance with the traffic light, you know, that you were so wise in buying and purchasing that land by the church, um, we are very excited about it. Students have more parking, and we're looking forward to eventually getting a traffic light there and having, you know, and, and a much safer exit and entrance, uh, every morning to our building, and creating more parking spaces, but a safe entrance way there, and certainly looking to make that an actual traffic, uh, light. And, you know, the biggest thing when I keep, when I'm highlighting here is just safety. Um, and it'll be so much better for all of us in and out. And then finally, the greenhouse, uh, to make our science program kind of like one of the, again, state-of-the-art, that's the one thing they missed with the renovation. The old greenhouse just couldn't be repaired, and it wasn't an area that was worth the repair based on the cost. We could build a whole new one for cheaper. So, that's what we're hoping for, again, as we move forward, uh, to get a greenhouse back for the Science Department.
So again, as we plan for the future, it's, it's nice to think in five, ten, fifteen, and even twenty-year increments, and every time we touch a space, we think about, it's gotta last twenty years. It's gotta handle twenty years of kids beating the absolute crap out of it, but still enjoying it and having enough modernity to live through. Um, with the music suite, it was tough. You guys are locked in a rectangle, and there's nowhere to expand. Uh, we could maybe invest a couple hundred million dollars and do some flyaway over the creek and work with the state and with the floodplain, but we looked at getting these spaces and then creating more acoustically accommodating spaces. So as you can see in these layouts and these plans, that's what these space shapes start to take form while accommodating not only your current numbers, but what your future numbers are gonna be for students as well. And so you can see the slight variations, but one unique thing we're looking at as well is in your choral rooms, getting a retractable, uh, bleacher style riser system that can be pulled away, and that room can be utilized for dance as that program is getting more popular. Also, the technology room, which would be right beneath that music suite of the corridor, right now, your shop is completely undersized and not very safe. And so, this new layout looks to open it up to provide new equipment and opportunities for that program to expand and grow, and also for your steam area to have more flexibility, more touchdown spaces, and just kind of look forward to what is steam gonna look like in the next twenty years, and how that'll evolve, and how the space can accommodate that. And also, that newsroom will have a green screen.
Thank you.
So I so appreciate the time this evening. I know this is probably the longest presentation of the year, but what we're talking about is probably north of fifty million dollars worth of, of capital work, capital investment. We just completed about probably seventeen, eighteen million dollars in two thousand seventeen, and another seven, eight million dollars in twenty-one, twenty-two. And the work, um, that's required to renovate these spaces and bring them up to modern, um, you know, modern expectations or current expectations is twenty-plus million dollars. So as we're advocating to the Board of Education, to our community, to reinvest in that opportunity that we have with the decrease in the tax cap, you can see just those two spaces, the music suite and the technology suite, would eat up a lot of that twenty million dollars. So, I appreciate the time, I appreciate giving us the, um, you know, the opportunity to show and present to the community all the work that's been done and all the work that we would like to achieve really over this next decade. So, thank you very much.
I, I just quickly note that, that picture with all the scaffolding here is jarring compared to where we're sitting right now, right? In, in terms of all the things you had to sort of work through as a team, it wasn't really hit on, you had a bunch of challenges with the tennis courts, trying to get that done correctly and going back to the providers there. So, ton of really great work, ton of stuff going on behind the scenes. There's always work to do when we got such a big population going through these buildings, but you sit in a space like this, and after all the headaches for you, Dr. Hall, and all those folks had to go through it, Nick, yeah, a bunch of other people, it's really a great result here. And, um, just congratulations for that. Any other questions or comments from the board? Great, we'll go on to the reports section. First up, um, and you've had the chance to see these reports, both the financial reports and the budget appropriation memo provided by Lou and his team. Does anybody have any questions or comments with regards to those? Those require separate approval, so I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Karen? Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, our student representative, Eliza, is here.
Hello, I'm Eliza, and I just wanna say hello from the Brighton Bruins. And first and foremost, Executive Council is super excited to be hosting our first Winter Formal on January twenty-seventh. We can see everyone's enthusiasm as we took a school-wide survey and got positive responses from about three hundred students. And at the ball, there'll be DJs, food, drinks, and other fun activities, which will be open to all BHS high schoolers. And then regarding clubs, there have been two new clubs that have been started at the BHS. Both clubs aim to provide exposure to students interested in the medical field. The first club would be Pathways to Medicine, who had Dr. Aidan Echthus come in as a guest speaker who specializes in physical medicine and rehabilitation, and he informed everyone on his profession. And the second club is Health Occupational Students of America, who had their first meeting last Tuesday, where previous HOSA alumnus came in to guide everyone on what the club encompasses and encourage those interested, interested to run for a leadership position, as it would provide great exposure for those that are interested in medical field. And as for sports, we're super proud of both the girls tennis and field hockey team for bringing home sectional titles. We had a great fall for all of our sports with many great team and individual finishes, and we're very proud of our athletes and coaches for the season. And last but not least, we, as we know, due to COVID, midterm week came to a halt. And a week ago, Dr. Hall has informed the students that we will no longer be having midterm weeks moving forward, though teachers may be giving in-class cumulative assignments to test material learned during the first quarter, which will be ending on February first. And then, talking about assessments, I have a test tomorrow, so I just wanna excuse myself so I can go study for that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Well done. Uh, Board of Education will first do our Monor County School Board Association meetings, labor relations, I happen to have that one, and that was back on November sixteenth. That was a presentation from Gates Childy in regards to electric buses. They own their own buses, and the mandates coming from state government around, and I forget the year, I'm sort of looking at Lou, I think it's thirty-five or forty, when they're, all fleets have to be fully electric. Bunch of challenges associated with infrastructure, having charging, and buses with longer routes being able to get charged in between. It's fascinating stuff, it's important. I'll also note that there's only two bus manufacturers, and they're not keeping up with their current schedule, so bunch of challenges ahead. And, um, we'll hear from Lou in a future meeting from First Student in terms of some of their plans on that. Uh, information exchange.
Information exchange didn't have a meeting this month. We won't meet again until January. We'll let you know. Stay tuned.
Legislative.
Legislative committee has actually met three times since our last meeting, which is a little bit unusual. Uh, steering committee met to approve all the tweaks to our position papers, which we provided to our area elected officials. Um, we met on the thirtieth to discuss our legislative day of advocacy, which Dr. McGowan and I both attended on December fifth. Um, we had two sessions. We did not have attendance of many actual elected officials. Um, our representatives from Albany are, were busy. Um, many, most sent aides. Um, I was a little disappointed personally that we didn't have actual legislators attend. Um, we discussed a lot of things. Dr. McGowan, how would you characterize that meeting?
Well, every one of these sessions is important to, um, for us to lay out a case and provide information, and some of them are more productive than others in terms of getting actual feedback and answers, and these are our next steps. But I think part of the problem with this particular one, as well-intentioned as it was by both the attendees and the legislators and their staff, is that there's a lot of unknown right now in Albany. So there were a lot of conversations that revolved around, well, that's a good point. Yeah, you should advocate for that. Or, there's also this interesting posturing happening because we do have technically a new governor, technically in the sense that elected to her first term, Governor Hokel has a longer period of time before she has to introduce a budget in January. And, um, as would not be surprising in political circles, particularly because many of the people on the meetings were of a different party, there were a lot of, well, we'll have to see what the governor proposes, and then we'll, we'll work from there. Um, in other words, like, well, we can't really tell you until it's laid out for us.
In other words, like, well, we can't really tell you until it's laid out for us what the governor would like to see happen. So, you know, I'm not sure productive dialogue would be the two words I would quickly apply to the meeting. I would say it's worth it because it's one step in the process, but we didn't like walk away with, oh, good, the legislature's going to move this direction, or this is what we're sensing. But I thought school board members, yourself included, did a really great job of making great points relative to what we're hoping for long-term.
And I think it's important, long-term, to keep up that contact because there's this, this almost the sense of there's like a lull, right? We've, we've gotten through the worst of the pandemic and we are achieving full funding of the foundation aid formula, and there's a little bit of a sense like, oh, we can take a breath. But from the perspective of schools, I don't really feel like we can take that breath because we're still facing the pressures of both increasing mandates from the state as well as the pressures put on schools financially via the tax cap. So we, we have to continue sending that message to folks that the things you are doing in Albany affect us deeply here on the ground. So it's always worth it to have that contact with folks, be they the legislators themselves or their aides. So it was good to attend. And looking forward now, the Legislative Committee will switch to, to planning for our Legislative Breakfast on February 4th, which I hope that everybody here can attend and that we have more faces at the tables, because that's a really great time to really connect with people about what our needs are ahead of that budget planning. February 4th, put it on your calendars.
Thank you. I'll do a quick update from BOCES. Mark Krokovich, former board member, is our representative and sent along notes to update. Included in their last December meeting for BOCES, the Presentation on Monroe One Initiatives on Restorative Practices and Creating Welcoming and Affirming Environments. Approval of Issues Associated with the Corrective Action Plan from their 2021-2022 External Audit. A little bit piggybacking on what you said, Karen, review of draft legislative priorities for the BOCES Education Consortium. And finally, they're continuing to do Monroe One BOCES Campus, which is over in Fairport. Tours by component districts are going on, and we'll look to set one up for ourselves in spring, and I'll work on that with Kim for all of you. Now, for other board member reports, Eleanor, why don't we start with you and just work this way down the table, if that's okay?
I don't have any reports from the meetings I attended. I was unable to attend the Curriculum Council meeting on the 16th of last month, but Karen did, so she can bring you up to speed on that. The school-based equity team for Brighton High School met on November 17th, and we are continuing our deep dive into the data collected from the Panorama Social Economic Emotional Survey back in spring of 2022, and concentrating on the questions pertaining to school climate, with only 56% of students who participated in the survey responding favorably about the energy of the school, and questions regarding a sense of belonging in school, with only 22% of participating students responding favorably in terms of feeling connected to the adults at their school. Only 37% of the students feel that people at their school understand them as a person. Only 37% of the students feel that they matter to others at their school, in particular females and Black or African Americans responded least favorably. And 45% of students feel that they, that, that they receive a tremendous amount or quite a bit of respect from other students in their school. And also, 55% of school, of the students feel that they belong to the school, in particular females and students who are Black or African American, they responded the least favorably. So clearly, there is a tremendous amount of work to be done to increase our female and Black students' sense of belonging, to build competence, and to have honest conversations about each other, about race, increase attachment between students and adults in the building and the school's overall energy. We're also revisiting the survey to fine-tune the questions in order to gain a deeper understanding about what's going on, and discussing the possibility of creating focus groups with students to create a safe space for them to really speak their minds and to gain more insight. I also attended the Hiring Practices Committee meeting this past Tuesday. We discussed our interviewing process and ways to improve it. We gained insight from Principal Evans, who recently went through our interviewing process, and she suggested providing questions to the candidates shortly before the interview. In particular, those questions that have multiple, multiple layers to them in order to allow the candidate to provide a more thoughtful and thorough answer. We also discussed the Pipeline Program we have with St. John Fisher Students for Fieldwork. And we had three applicants last year from that program and one higher who is currently teaching fifth grade, which is really something to be excited about. We talked about our continued efforts for recruiting more teachers of color and focusing on the fact that the primary way we are finding people of color is through referrals, not through our college connections and not through advertising, preferably primarily through referrals. And the increase is happening, but it is at a very slow pace. We also discussed the development of, of a Hiring Practices Liaison Position. And this position would be an extension of human resources and would conduct state interviews and exit interviews, would produce honest feedback to administrators and teachers, and would be a trusted ear between the teachers and the administrators. And we also discussed that the primary reason this liaison is needed is to provide a safe space, particularly for our staff of color, and therefore, every effort should be made to fill this position with a person of color. And finally, the first meeting of the Suspension Disproportionality Committee will be this coming Tuesday. That's all I got.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen?
As Esther said, I did attend Curriculum Committee, our first meeting of the year. At our task this year, along with Dr. Rio, is to construct the profile of a Brighton graduate. And I'm excited about this work because it really gets at the knowledge, skills, and attributes we want folks to have when they leave us. And it made me think a lot about my own kids and, and their successes here and now that at their four-year colleges. But also this opportunity to, to think about what our values are, and then how the work we do with our students reflects that. So I think that that's, that's great work. On the same day, I attended the PTA meeting. We had a presentation from a Brighton parent who works at Nazareth College about mental health first aid. And I really appreciate the focus the PTA has on the presentations they've been doing surrounding mental health and their focus on community education. That's great work. I met later in the month with the Academic Intervention Services Response to Intervention Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Meeting Committee. That's a mouthful. But again, that's, that's really great work, looking at our practices of supporting students and how, what the definitions of that work are, and then how that plays out in reality in our classrooms, in our buildings. There's great work being done to support students, and I think that that committee has a really wonderful opportunity to refine and to redefine how we support students. And then, just last week, I met with the 12 Corners Middle School School-Based Equity Team, and we were talking about the New York State Culturally Responsive Sustainability Education Standards around a welcoming and affirming environment. And it was interesting to me to think about how New York State laid that out in terms of the idea that everyone in a school community has a responsibility to do that. So we, we talked about the role that students play, the role administrators and district leaders and teachers play, and how we can make that better in our building. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I also attended our Brighton School-Based Equity Team for FRES, led by Principal Evans. We also used the New York State standards sort of as a framework, and we worked in small groups, looking specifically at goals that different groups of stakeholders in our community could do and create to make a welcoming, affirming environment. So we had one small group working on what could students do, what would be like a tangible, actionable goal. Same with teachers, same with community, and same with district leadership. Working in those small groups is great because it generates lots of ideas and then we're able to share out in the large group. And I thought that was, you'll be hearing a lot more about that and what we came up with. Also, not one of my committees, but a volunteer opportunity I had to volunteer at the TCMS Middle School for an eighth-grade activity night, which was a smashing success. And I think that it can be used as a model for a lot of our activities and programming because it was an activity night for students of all abilities, and there was something really for everyone. It was a real success. The gym was open for sports, there were seated activities, there were games, there were structured activities like Minute to Win It, which was more supervised for kids who enjoyed having some more like teacher oversight. There was dancing, there was karaoke, it was, it was a little bit of everything. And we had so many teachers coming in and out and working between the rooms, really connecting with the students. We even had nursing staff there, so kids of different abilities, didn't have to let a medical condition prevent them from participating. So I really think it was a model. I think Ms. Evans, it was really, really a wonderful experience. So I think we can use that as an example for, I mean, our other schools and things we do. So that's what I think.
Thanks.
I attended the Brighton Believes meeting on December 1st. I believe it was Lance who reported out on Purple Week in the high school, which is run by Friends of Rachel, and it focuses on kindness, peace, and inclusion. The New Family Reception, I believe Deanna reported on that earlier, will be held January 12th from 6:00 PM until 7:00 at Council Rock. The Day of Caring is early in March, and that will, all four buildings will participate on the Day of Caring, and they're very excited about being able to go back to what they did originally before 2020. So that's something to look forward to. And Town reported Clean Sweep is May 13th, and there'll be more information to come as we get closer to that. That's all.
The Brighton Teacher Center Policy Board met last month, and they just went over the purpose of the foundation of the Brighton Teacher Center and the regulations that govern their center. There are three more meetings this school year, and it will focus on professional learning, the plan for professional learning as well as subcommittee work, the New York State School Board Associations, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Group will meet again in January, and we are represented by all the areas of New York State, and focusing on diversity, equity, inclusion in our, in our state education system, so, and on our school board, training our school board members in DEI.
I'll just quickly say we had the Monroe County School Board Association Board President's Meeting back on November 30th, discussing a lot of advocacy around funding, safety, and transportation, specifically bus drivers, common needs among the districts, and construction, OACM, as Lou pointed out, was last Monday, but that was already well-covered, so no need to add to that. Anything else from board members? Nicole and Peter, you've been very patient, so thank you. Nicole, you're up first.
Sure, thanks. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the great things that are happening in schools. And as you can see from my report, I just can't help but include every photograph that gets sent because the expressions on students' faces are just amazing. So at Council Rock, students in Mr. Koch's second-grade class made Veterans Day cards, which were delivered to the Veterans Outreach Center. Mr. Northrop's second-grade Ls in their standalone Enel class, they learned about the life cycle of corn, and they did all sorts of cool experiments with predictions. They made daily observations, they kept a journal, they graphed data illustrated, really focusing on English conventions. They made sure to use their habits of mind of striving for accuracy, thinking, communicating, and responding with wonderment and awe. And he does have a small garden in his office now. I did not share this, but this is my class. My second-grade class was in music, and they worked to assemble rhythm bricks. And these are themed cards with short rhythms, but it's all in full musical notation. So they named them after different pieces of pie. So they created a chain of lemon, blueberry, peanut butter, coconut, and they had to speak and say the rhythms. So they really worked together as teams, and again, our habits of mind of thinking independently, thinking flexibly, listening with understanding and empathy, and striving for accuracy. For Election Day, the second graders vote for the Toy Hall of Fame from the Museum of Play. So second graders were able to go into the HAB Lab and vote. We made, we constructed voting booths and a ballot box, and they were able to go in and vote for the toys that they thought should be included. They were able to fill out their own ballot and get an "I voted" sticker and wear it if they would like to. And we created, Mrs. Youngman's class and my class created election kind of campaign posters for each toy to encourage, encourage the information. And then you can see there's just more pictures of voting. After they voted, Mrs. Youngman's class tallied the votes. The three that we chose for Council Rock did not make it into the Toy Hall of Fame. So Council Rock chose Nerf toys, pinata, and pound puppies, but actually Light Bright Masters of the Universe in the top made it in, so, yeah. And in PE for Fall Fun Gym, which is Halloween Gym, if you remember Halloween Gym, they worked on proper ways to jump, land, and balance on objects. They worked with Connor Lorenzo, the U of R Athletic Performance Specialist who helps here at the high school. And they were able to create a fitness unit where they learned about good posture, proper form, and basic movements. You can see a few there. They have bird dogs and dead bugs and suitcase carries, so they were having a good time. This was an amazing project that Katie Fallon and Liz Fallon, sorry, Liz Files collaborated on. So they used the B-Box and habits of mind, and then we had author visit from John and Haley Rocco, who just wrote a book together, How to Send a Hug. So they did all of those pieces together and created the pathway of how they were going to mail their letter, to mail their hug. They wanted to make sure to thank Katie Fallon for planning and setting up this activity, Adele M. for bringing the authors and illustrator to Council Rock, and then particularly the PTA and the Brighton Education Fund, who provided each classroom with a book and the, a letter and postage. And then on the next page, I just, those, those photos speak for themselves, they're amazing. And then you can see first graders mailing their letters. And we'll move to FRES. In health, students are learning about their brain, so they're learning about their amygdala, their prefrontal cortex, and their hippocampus, and how it relates to self-regulation. And then a former FRES student, meteorologist Gabe, I'm sorry, James Gilbert, came to present to fifth graders to talk about what a meteorologist is, how you can become one, and how they forecast the weather. And then he actually was a student of Mrs. Higgins, so he came and visited her classroom and talked about how math and science really inspired him to go into meteorology. The mental health team at FRES partnered with students from RIT to test sensory items. So they used something called a puzz tub, where they made prototypes using 3D printers, and they made sensory puzzles. They, the faculty and staff and the kids all really enjoyed trying out the different items and being able to manipulate them once they were printed. Students in fourth grade have been learning about figurative and literal meaning of having a great heart. So a pediatric, pediatric cardiologist, Dr. Coles, who's the parent of a student, came to talk about the heart and demonstrated anatomy for them, well, yeah, using a diagram. Fourth-grade Viola students are showing perfect left and right hand technique there. And then this was just really amazing. So this year, the FRES PTA provided the entire third-grade class, which is the class of 2032, with barrels and 500 tulip bulbs to plant for the courtyard in the third-grade wing. They brought in chairs, tables, bird feeders, they're working on canopies, and they brought in the soil, purchased supplies, equipment, and really dug through there. They wanted to make sure to thank Melissa Staloff, Carrie Lynn Bertino, and Val Budkin, and anyone else who helped. And then you have some photographs of the fifth graders helping the third graders to plant, and their favorite part of jumping out the third-grade window in Mrs. Moulton's room. And then lots of different classes coming out to plant. And then lots of different classes coming up to plant and help. And on to TCMS. The Intern Program returned after a two-year hiatus. This is a program through the AMity Organization. So the interns come. They live in Rochester with a Brighton family for the whole school year. And they work in the schools with the French, Spanish, and German teachers. So we have an intern from Switzerland, one from Switzerland that's the French-speaking side, another from Switzerland that's the German-speaking side, and then another intern from Chile. They prepare presentations about their lives and they work with students on language learner. Mrs. Newcomers French students are working, and I'm going to not say this correctly, musique mercredi, where they are studying French singers or French singing groups and making up short bios of them and then using some of their expressions in their classwork and adding them to their playlist. Mrs. Swas made social emotional learning in action. She's incorporating brain breaks with her students at the beginning of each class. Students use brain break time to connect, talk, play a game, play with sand or Play-Doh, and really just connect with each other. And then there is the Dry Ice Sublimation Lab in Mrs. Padilla and Mrs. Elkins' classes. So this is a very fun explosive experiment. I tried to attach the video, but I couldn't get it to work. So that's probably for the better because it was pretty explosive. And then congratulations to the winners of the Bullying Prevention Month Contest. We had short stories, artwork, poems, and comics. Each student submitted an original piece or artwork. And it's on display outside the TCMS library. In Frau Walter's sixth-grade German class, they performed their skits based on characters from Muzzy. They dressed like their Muzzy characters, spoke the German lines, and then acted the same way. They had a lot of fun and it was very silly. At BHS, Brighton's Red Cross Club started. They had an engagement specialist from the Red Cross of Western New York who came to talk about what the Red Cross does. They encouraged students to participate in various opportunities, not only in Brighton, but in the community at large. And for the most recent presentation in the large group room from 12th grade Law and Government, Brighton alumnus Katie Morris-Hartford, who's a federal prosecutor, she came to talk about how she follows, how she works with prosecution of narcotics and organized crime. So they had time to ask a lot of questions and their internship opportunities once you're a college student. In October, BHS held their Day of Dance and Donuts. Three seniors planned and ran three dance workshops for 44 students. They were able to get six dozen donuts donated from Duck and Donuts. And parent volunteers helped. Mrs. Padilla and Mrs. Edwards also took a dance workshop. And they are advocating for dance programs at the high school. And the chemistry teachers, Jessica Weber and Alba Kandar, presented a session on ocean acidification at the November Science Teachers Association of New York State. During this, they talked about how they use Ambition's Science Teaching Design Process to understand real-world problems. This was co-designed during the COVID lockdown with other students. And the teachers have been implementing this for the past three years with great buy-in. And last but not least, BHS students participated in the first-ever Unified Bowling Season. There were 10 students who bowled against other Monroe County teams. They had a wonderful time. The team was coached by Aaron Dwyer.
Thank you very much. Never a shortage of many things going on. And thank you for all the pictures. They're fantastic. Peter?
Mine will actually be rather brief. The PTSA continues to support the students, staff, and teachers of the school district. Stay tuned.
Great. Thank you very much. Dr. McGowan?
I just want to thank Mrs. Pagnola for her work. And wait, before all of our students go, I wanted to thank them too for coming. Never mind. Have a great, have a great break. I want to tell them, they're not all gone. I want to note who's still here for Mr. Wilson's records. I'm just kidding. But I did want to thank Mrs. Pagnola for her great report for all of the OACM folks, the entire crew that reported. It's really interesting when you listen to those and you listen to Nicole and Peter's reports and you think about just the unbelievable number of things that happened here and all of your reports around the ways you're so active in so many committees and supporting the work here. So thanks to all of you for really providing people, I think, a great overview of that. Very briefly, we will welcome the Israeli delegation tomorrow and teachers who will be visiting our schools. The schools have done a great job preparing to welcome them warmly and really engage in some experiences that develop the partnership even further. And just best wishes again to our students, staff, everybody, for great holidays if they're celebrating, wonderful times if you're not. And really a restful break all the way around. We wish everybody a wonderful December. And thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple more pieces of business. First, we've received bids, two bids for cooperative bids, rather, valuation. First, for electrical supply. And second, for evaluation for school lunch paper and plastic supplies. You've had a chance to review those as necessary. Any questions or comments? Motion to approve? Moved by Eleanor? Seconded by Christina? All those in favor? Aye. Include also on the final, item 10 is the Consent Agenda, which is personnel changes, recommendations from both special ed and preschool special ed. There's a field trip approval on here, a number of fundraising activities. And as is our custom, we will read the gifts. First, a gift from Susan Miller to the Visual and Performing Arts Department in the amount of $300 to the Dennis Miller Scholarship Fund. Second, an anonymous gift of window curtain panels to the Visual and Performing Arts Department. Any questions with regards to the Consent Agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen? Seconded by Susan? All those in favor? Aye. I'll make two quick notes along with Dr. McGowan, wishing everybody a happy holidays. However you celebrate, whatever you celebrate, you're able to spend time with friends and family. And I'll say, see you in 2023. However, we will be on the 3rd of January in the 12 Corners Middle School Library. It's the fourth part of our sort of road trip. So very exciting there. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Esther? Seconded by Karen? All those in favor? We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.